At this time, we'd ask you to please stand. Reverend William will leave us an invitation. Remain standing while I place the disc.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for blessings realized and unrealized. Grant that we, as council members, be able to catch the Mayor's vision for the city of Goldsboro and join with him as a team united with the good of all the citizens of our city. As humans, we acknowledge that we cannot control the predictability of the routine that oftentimes dull the capacity for the unexpected, the exuberant excitement of spontaneity in the gift of the moment. So, we ask that thou will impede the progress of inflated egos and personal agendas and, with thine divine presence, catch the vision and help to move Goldsboro forward. We also ask that thou will grant peace and happiness to our city, our state, our nation, and all nations. It is in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask our City Clerk, Paul Rowe-Ford.
Mayor King.
Here.
Mayor Frank Allen.
Here.
Councilwoman Bennet.
Here.
Councilwoman Robles.
Here.
Councilwoman Bogan.
Here.
Councilwoman Rehna.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We're all here. Moving right along, public comment period. Anyone who would like to take up to three minutes to address us, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone? Ma'am, if you want to, please come forward. And give us your name and mailing address, and then your comments.
My name is Nicole Denise Hughes. Care for the War Organization, the Family War Organization, the Men. We're both a nonprofit organization that helps families to realize that the family evaluation has been existed, and we'll put our trust and our needs to what we could do in the community. And we recently opened another nonprofit human rights organization called Operation Black Steel that helps all humans to believe that all the injustices that happens in the world, you know, just, you know, to help innocent prisoners. So, I just care to say, you know, I'm right here. And I'm also want to say from here for this meeting that the promise of the illiteracy happening in this community has gone to a straight-up high. And recently, I've read a News August article about race, racism, and inequality, and I forgot who was the journalist who wrote it. And she said that forty-five percent of individuals living in Wayne County are strictly illiterate, and there weren't no youth centers that could help them, you know, older people, to help them to escape the poverty rate, I mean, the illiteracy rate. I just want to say, not only is that because we want another youth center here, but we need to operate of helping other people that illiteracy is still struck in our community, and we need to open more nonprofit free income reading, reading resource programs, the way ABE used to be before it was headed for Wayne Community College, just to help the people just to learn how to read, you know, to go for different levels, like finding a job or, you know, getting an education. Thanks anyway.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? If not, we have presentations, wags for tags, so my people here?
Yes, I'm right here.
There, yes, sorry, Terri?
How are you?
I'm fine. Your colleagues with you?
Unfortunately, he has surgeries, so he's a little bit out of pockets on stuff.
Well, you can handle it. Terri Schuber?
Yes, sir.
I've had the pleasure of meeting Terri, and she's very dedicated, she and her colleague, what they're doing, and we want her to tell the council and the city of Goldsboro about this project that they have.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me, oh, thank you, for allowing me the opportunity. I may, I'm not sure how this works, if I should face you or if I should face the council?
You can face us. They have, yeah.
Okay, very well. Thank you. I appreciate your time and attention. Before I start, I'd like to just throw out a couple statistics I think are very interesting and very poignant to what I'm about to tell you. First off, North Carolina has the highest pet kill rate in the nation. About 300,000 animals are killed, euthanized, in shelters every year. That amounts, if you break it down, to about 103 per hour. Let's put that aside for a second. Another statistic which I think you all are aware of, North Carolina has the third-largest military population base in the nation, next to Texas and California. And given our size, that is pretty impressive. And the third piece of information I'd like to share is, as of right now, and this is from the Pentagon, as of right now, more soldiers are killing themselves than being killed in action. Fort Bragg, unfortunately, Fort Bragg has the highest suicide rate. In the month of July alone, there were thirty-eight suicides, that's more than one a day, and at Fort Bragg, there were thirteen. So, we have three separate bits of information. My PowerPoint hopefully will help tie all this together in what it is we do and why we do it. Wags for Tags, we are dedicated to rescuing dogs from kill shelters, training them as companion dogs or emotional support dogs, and gifting them to our military with the invisible injuries of war. Unfortunately, sometimes you cannot tell if a person has traumatic brain injury or has post-traumatic stress disorder, or anxiety, or depression, or suicidal ideation. We can tell if someone has prosthetic, we can tell if someone has been physically injured, but the invisible injuries are the ones that often sneak by us, unfortunately. I mentioned about the statistics. I know I have a short period of time, so I did bring that up front rather than going through here, but yes, many of us as pet owners know how important pets are to us, and it is traumatic to hear that we have such a high rate. Likewise, we are the third largest. With the addition of the U.S. Army Forces Command and Reserve Command, Fort Bragg is going to be the largest army base in the world.
Yeah.
There we are, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Additionally, VA hospitals, we have four VA hospitals and twelve outpatient posts. And again, what is the issue that's plaguing our VA hospitals, our military, our communities, and our families right now? PTSD, TBI. They present themselves different ways, there are different triggers, I won't go into that now, but they are very different things that can trigger an episode, as well as different symptoms. However, the most common, of course, are re-experiencing or nightmares, flashbacks, avoidance-numbing, emotional separation, and of course, the hypervigilance, and a lot of anger, a lot of guilt. And what does that anger and guilt often lead to? Thirty percent of, about thirty percent of our service members are coming back with PTSD, and they are four times as likely to endorse suicidal ideation than those counterparts without Again, this year, 154 succumbed to suicide while 124 were killed in action. Our veterans had been there for us, how can we be there for them? What does Wags for Tags do? I just love his face. But there has been volumes of documentation that has suggested that canines do have a therapeutic effect. I think we know that because there are so many therapy dogs, and ourselves, just in our own homes. How many of us have pets at home? We know what they do to us, we know how to make them feel. Take that to the next level. Take that to training them to be companion dogs or emotional support dogs. And again, I won't go into the differences in those levels of training, but suffice it to say that, as Judge Blaislon from the Mental Health Law in Washington, D.C. has endorsed, that emotional support animals have proven to be extremely effective at ameliorating the symptoms of PTSD. It's going, we're making strides in that some of these animals are now being recognized by the Fair Housing Act. Emotional support dogs are now able to come into no dogs-allowed living, as well as the FAA has also allowed emotional support dogs to travel with their owners in the cabin on airplanes, thus allowing our veterans to venture out of their four walls of the war they brought back with them. Canine therapy is something that we firmly believe in. We believe that the window's and doors to the veteran. However, we are not the only ones that believe this. There is a local prominent university, I'm not at liberty to disclose who it is just yet. Right now, our case is sitting at the desk at the Pentagon for a Colonel to approve, but a large university locally is looking to use our organization, our veterans, as subject matters for a study to prove the therapeutic effects of canine therapy on our veterans. So, we're hopeful that's going to go through. It should be here within the next couple months. I could go into what we do, I will, I know I'm limited on time. We have partnered with the VFW, we work with many shelters across the state, we work with social workers, we work with the Rotary Clubs to try and reach out as much as we can to our veterans across the state. We are strictly in North Carolina because we feel North Carolina needs us the most. Our dogs are trained, they're vetted, they're neutered. As a matter of fact, we just had a fundraiser last week, and we raised enough money to be able to treat one of our dogs that we've rescued, it's a blue healer, with severe heartworms and a tick infection. And we've raised enough money, we're able to vet her, we will begin the training, and we will be pairing her up with one of our veterans that came back from Desert Storm, so we're very excited about that. We have tried to train trainers, we have, we meet with the veteran, we train the dogs to the needs of the veterans. Our organization's president, Ronnie Sadaski, who you, sir, know, is a veteran himself who is here today because of his dog Sadie, and he's very, if he were here today, he would be telling you how much Sadie has helped him and how she has saved his life. The help we are seeking is, the sky's the limit. First and foremost is awareness. Please, if you know of any organization, if you know of anyone or any groups that we can speak in front of, to talk to social workers, to try and get the word out that we are here to serve them, our veterans, we would appreciate that. Functions, of course, we are private nonprofit, all of us are volunteers, so we do, again, if you have an organization that is willing to help, help us with a fundraiser, we would welcome that as well. If anyone here is able to refer us to trainers, fosters, we will accept any kind of help whatsoever. We are on the, we have our website, wagsfortags.org. I have some flyers here, I will leave here if you'll permit me, sir. Please take one. And we are also on Facebook. And let's all, we just want to be able to let our shelter dogs and our veterans know that we have not forgotten them. We know we have a lot of veterans coming home in the near future, and we want to be there for them. In closing, John Tomlinson, this is, I would just let you read that and leave you with that thought.
Well, I think it's certainly a worthwhile project, and I was very happy to see the language that you had, one of the speakers you had on there, talking about ameliorating PTSD symptoms versus eradicating, because you can't eradicate.
That's correct, sir.
Psychiatric and psychologically, we know that that's not possible. I did see one proposed study where they're looking at canine therapy alone versus canine therapy with talk therapy with psychopharmacology, to see which of those components actually is the most effective. So, I'm going to be very interested to see how that study pans out, and also the study that you were referring to.
Absolutely, and you are absolutely correct, sir. We do not propose, our, my organization does not propose that canine therapy is the solution in conjunction with psychotherapy, counseling, social work, and medication. It does help ameliorate. It is not an answer to it, it is just in conjunction, but you're absolutely right.
Thanks, Terri.
Anyone has any questions?
I've met with Terri and Ronnie a couple of times, and they are really dedicated to what they're doing, and they have an opportunity to help the individual military person who needs it, and the canine.
Absolutely.
And Ronnie has a story that he can tell, it's a personal experience, that's very impressive. So, anything that we can do to help get the word out, we'll do it, and I'll be in touch with you and make sure that you're available to explain this to other people.
We would welcome the opportunity.
You had to travel, she doesn't live right down the road.
No, I live in Raleigh, but this is...
She's from the city, but she comes in.
We are across the state. As a matter of fact, tomorrow I'm going to be in Charlotte, Saturday I was in Tarboro, not Tarboro, excuse me, in Crumpler, North Carolina, which are the foothills of the mountains, and next weekend I'm going to be at Tarboro. So, we do operate across the entire state, but we do know that this is a very crucial part. Goldsboro is the home of Seymour Johnson and our military. So, thank you again, I appreciate your opportunity.
Thank you, Terri.
If anyone has questions, I'll be here for a little bit longer.
And Mr., Ms., thousands are listening to you and looking at you right now.
Who are?
Thousands are looking at our TV viewing area, they're watching you right now and listening.
Well, thank you. I'm glad I didn't know that beforehand.
No, Terri, he speaks from experience because they get on us from time to time about things we do. So, we have a lot of people watching, that's true.
Oh, my goodness, well, thank you. Whoever's watching us, please, you know, please.
That's why I wanted you, not just to talk to us, I wanted you to talk to the people out there.
Well, I'm glad I didn't know that till now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to public hearing.
Mayor, I'll turn it over to Jimmy Rowe to carry us through our public hearings this evening.
Mayor, City Councilman, item B, CU-1312, US Cellular. The property is located on Northwest Corner of East New Hope Road and Central Heights Road. The property is shown here in the cross-stash area. This is New Hope Road, it's shown here, this is Central Heights Road. This is an area photograph of the property, this is subject property that's shown here. This is the location of the proposed tower. This is Genus Transmission that's located here. The occupant requests a conditional use permit to allow the placement of the communication tower within the general business R-12 residential zoning district. An identical request was previously submitted, which was denied by the City Council without prejudice in order to allow resubmission without a six-month waiting period. The occupant has reapplied for a conditional use permit for another location of the property which is owned and occupied by Genus Transmission, which is further away from the property line adjacent to the duplex unit. A fifty-by-fifty-foot area is to be leased for the placement of the proposed 120-foot tall monopole with no guide wires. The lease site contains a total of 2,500 square foot or .06 acres of land. The lease area would contain the monopole location, a 12-by-12, a 12-foot-by-20-foot equipment shelter, a future generator pad, a pad for a future propane tank on the interior of the fence area. The base of the tower will be surrounded by a six-foot chain-league fence with barbed wire and should not be visible from beyond the property owned by Genus Transmission. The proposed monopole tower will be made of steel in light gray color, and it will be designed for additional wireless users, thereby decreasing the need for future towers in the area. The tower location is set back at least 195 feet from the property line owned by Genus Transmission. The required setback distance is 1/50% of the tower height, which is 1/80 feet. The tower will be located approximately 35 feet from the warehouse to the north, approximately 114 feet from the warehouse structure to the south. There is no residential to develop property within 180 feet of the tower location. Submitting engineering data indicates that the structure is designed to collapse and fold inward if the tower falls. These are some photographs of the proposed site. This is Genus, well, this is the rest line here. This is the road that takes you down to the tower location, and the tower will be in this area here. The recommendation is no action necessary. The Plan Commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on October the first, 2012.
Thanks. Any questions from Jimmy, the council? Thanks, Jimmy. This is a public hearing, as Mr. Rowe just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against, or the comment, we'd be glad to hear from you. This is a conditional use permit, so we would have to have our clerk swear you in, and she can do that, or take a second. Anyone would like to speak? Yes, sir. If you please come, and our clerk will swear you in.
Can you spray the comments here about to batter the culture and nothing but the streets I don't need?
Yes, sir, and if you'd give us your name and mail address.
My name is Michael Doran. Address is 1125 Corporate Drive, Greenville, North Carolina. It's also the headquarters of US Cellular. I came before you a couple months ago, and just wanted to see if there were any other questions that the board may have, or the council may have, from me.
I don't think so from us.
Okay, no. Well, I'm speaking, this is, I guess I'd just like to add that we did move the location, it seemed to be something that was needed or wanted by the council and planning board, and we accommodated them with that matter, which I already have. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing those signs that there's anyone else, we'll close this public hearing and we'll move to our next.
Item C, ZU-1412, Drew Wofford. The property is located on the west side of North Center Street between Marlboro Street and Walnut Street. The occupant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with ABC permit, a nightclub. The property is shown here in the cross-stash area. This is Center Street, it's shown here, this is Walnut Street. This is an area photograph of the proposed site. Each of the two stories in the building would contain a 3,750 square foot. The occupant has submitted a preliminary floor plan showing the conversion of both stories of the building into a nightclub. The first floor would contain an office, this is the floor plan, would contain an office, a bar, restroom, seating, and assembly, and a dance floor area. This is the proposed dance area here. This is the entrance into the club that's shown here. This is the bar area, these are the restrooms located here, and these are some seats here, these are bar seats, and this is the stairway. The second floor will also have a bar, seating area, pool tables, and restrooms. Although the occupancy limit has not been established by the Inspection Department, the occupant has estimated that the use will lie for 99 customers on each floor. The City Unified Development Order sets forth specific criteria for the approval of the request. Within the central business district, a place of entertainment with ABC permits should maintain a separation distance of 50 feet from churches or schools. The subject site is not located within 50 feet of the church or school. If the conditional use permit is approved from complaint from the, complaint from any person, a public hearing may be scheduled to the council to determine if any additional conditions need to be proposed, or whether the permit should be modified, suspended, or revoked. The recommendation is no action necessary. The Plan Commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on October the first, 2012. Here are a couple photographs of the property.
Thanks. Give me any questions from council or Mr. Rowe. Again, this is a conditional use request. Anyone who would like to speak, we'd be glad to hear from you. And again, we need to have our clerk swear you in, and all parties who would like to speak, would you come at this time, and she can swear you all in, and then we'll take Are there other speakers, or is... Yes, ma'am. Do you give us your name and mail address?
Connie Parrish, 176 Highway 13 South, Dudley, North Carolina. I'm representing the Variety Wholesale Company. I'm the manager of the Maxways Downtown Goldsboro, and I have a letter here from John Pope Trust Fund, and it's opposing having alcohol permitted for this vicinity. But I have a letter if you would like to see it.
You can leave it with our clerk, we'd be glad to...
All right. We also have one that represented the Maxways store, 125 South Center Street.
Yes, if you leave them with her, we'll get them. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I don't see any indications, so we will close this public hearing, and we will move to our next.
Item D, Z912, Iris Weaver. The property's sought to be rezoned, located on the northeast corner of East Ash Street and Andrews Avenue. The property has a frontage of 25 feet on Ash Street, a frontage of 276.85 feet on Andrews Avenue, a total area of approximately 24,024.38 square feet or .56 acres. The present zone classification is R-9 residential. The proposed zone classification is often institutional. The subject property is shown here in the cross-stash area. The property is here, it's on R-9, this is on R-6. The property here in the dark blue zone, it's office residence. The property here, in this light blue zone, is often institutional, and the property shown here is on a neighborhood business. This is the comprehensive land use plan. It indicates that the property here is shown in the cross-stash area, the proposed for existing residential development, and the property shown here is proposed for commercial development. This is an area photograph of the site, these are some photographs here.
Since a conditional district zone has not been requested, no use for the property has to be specified. The request is often institutional, one zoning district, will commit a church, daycare center, and offices with no retail. A residential dwelling that was previously located on the property was demolished prior to 2005. The areas along both sides of East Ash Street in this vicinity are capitalized by office-type conversions. The option which to market the property for sale is often institutional one site since it is unlikely they will be utilized for residential purposes. The recommendation is no action necessary. The Plan Commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on October the first, 2012.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Again, this is a public hearing, as Mr. Rowe just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come forward and give us your name and mailing address.
My name is Iris Weaver. We live at 431 Mandagrove Church Road in Mount Olive, and I'm just not clear what his proposal is, I apologize.
Not clear is...
Would you make it? I want, we wanted to have it zoned for business. Is that your recommendation? I'm sorry, because I didn't understand that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing and we will go to our next.
Item E, Z ten twelve, Madison Avenue, I L L C. The property sought to be rezoned is located on the north side of East B Street between Madison Avenue and Best Street. The property has a frontage of six eight point twelve feet, a depth of one seventy-five feet, and a total area of eleven thousand nine hundred twenty-one square feet, or point two seven acres. The present zoning classification is R nine residential. The proposed zoning classification is neighborhood business. The subject property is shown here in the cross-stash area. This is Hollis Street as shown here. B Street runs here. Madison Avenue is shown here. The property in the blue color here is often institutional. The property in the pink here is neighborhood business. And the properties here is zoned for residential purposes, R nine residential. The comprehensive land use plan delineates the subject property for existing residential development. And the property shown here in the blue for public, semi-public development. This is the area photograph shown here. This is the property in question. And these are some photographs of the site. A condition use district has not been requested. Therefore, no use for the property has to be specified. The requested neighborhood business zoning district would permit small commercial development, which would be compatible with nearby residential areas. The maximum building across areas length of twenty-four thousand square foot in the neighborhood business zoning district. As noted previously, the property is currently utilized for a parking lot, which is associated with the business using, business uses fronted on Madison Avenue to the west. The request would, in effect, continue the existing neighborhood business boundary which exists to the north starting at Hollis Street. The recommendation is not actually necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on October the first, two thousand and twelve.
Thanks, Jimmy. Any questions from Jimmy? Again, public hearing just described. Anyone who'd like to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and mail address.
Rick Solner, one and nine Pine Ridge Lane. Um, as you can see from this picture, it's basically a park, parking area. And I think for years and years it's been parking. I think with Sally's Pizza, Billy's Backstreet. What's there now is Gateway, which I think y'all are aware of. And American Property Rentals is on the other side. You have various businesses in between. So basically, the front's all business. The back's used for parking. We just kind of wanted to get zoned properly. Right now, it's residential. And being a parking area, it would make more sense to be neighborhood business. So that's really what we're requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Not, we will close this public hearing. And our hard-working planning commission, they've been sitting here listening to this stuff, and they want to get out and get to work now. So if you want to stay around for the rest of it, you may. But at this time, if you'd like to be excused, you may. I have a feeling they're gonna leave. Yeah. They always do then.
The address is eight hundred East Marlberry Street. Eight hundred East Marlberry Street.
Eight hundred ten...
Eight hundred East East.
Eight hundred East Marlberry.
Marlberry.
Marlberry. Oh, good. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next.
Next item we have for public hearing is item F. It's a contiguous annexation request for the West and Howell properties. It's a property located on the southwest corner of Salem Church Road and Buck Swamp Road. This is the subject property here. Zoom in a little closer. This is Buck Swamp Road here. This is Salem Church Road. It's contiguous with the city limits at this point right here. It is a nineteen point six five acre piece of property. Going to the aerial photo, this shows the property here. It's currently primarily being used for farmland at this time. The city council, their meeting on August twentieth, two thousand and twelve, scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of the subject property. A public hearing notice was properly advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. Pursuant to state law, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area to be annexed, as well as residents of the municipality, shall be given an opportunity to be heard on this proposed annexation. If the council determines that proposed annexation meets all the requirements of state law, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. Attached to your agenda packet is a report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in conjunction with other city departments concerning the subject annexation area. As noted in the report, if the property is annexed, the owners will be required to sign a waiver of the provision of water and sanitary sewer service to the property. Staff would recommend that council after conduct a public hearing, and after the public hearing, council may adopt the attached ordinance annexing the West and Howell property, which would be effective September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, if you adopt it.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Again, public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak for or against or comment, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone? Seeing no one interested, we will close this public hearing and we have final.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the attached ordinance annexing the West and Howell properties.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, close. Motion's carried. Now we will go to final hearing.
Our final public hearing tonight is item G. It's a public hearing to allow the citizens the opportunity to comment on the City of Goldsboro's draft of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as the CAPER. Um, this is for entitlement, grantees receiving community development block grant, CDBG, and home investment partnership funds, otherwise known as home funds. On July first, two thousand and eleven, the City of Goldsboro received three hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars in CDBG funding and two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars in home funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for this past fiscal year of two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. The CAPER provides an opportunity for the city to assess its annual performance and discuss what actions or changes it contemplates as a result of its performance. Additionally, it is designed to provide information on how the city annually uses its entitlement funds during the most recently completed program year. To comply with program guidelines, the city must meet the following citizen participation requirements. Number one, make the reports available to the public for examination and comment for a period of not less than fifteen days. And number two, provide a description of the process it undertook to ensure the public had an opportunity to review this document. And three, provide a summary of any public comments received either in writing or at this public hearing as part of the document and our citizen participation process. The draft of the CAPER document has been prepared and has been available for, for review from October thirty-first to September fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. The copies were made available at public access sites such as the City of Goldsboro, um, the Community Development Department, community affairs offices, as well as online. Notice this public hearing was advertised in the Goldsboro News August on August thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Staff would recommend that council, after the public hearing, adopt the two recommended motions in your agenda.
Any questions from... Last public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against or make comment? Anyone? Seeing that there's no one interested in speaking, we will close this public hearing and we have a recommendation here.
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation that we adopt the evaluation for, for the CAPER report that Randy just provided to the council.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Closing. Motion's carried. Thank you. Now we will go to consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, council, you do have five items on the consent agenda, items H through L. If there are any questions, we could address those, but it's items H through L.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the consent agendas that are cited there, H through L.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We adopt the consent agenda. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor Preston Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Leighton?
Yes.
Councilman Bobbey?
Yes.
Councilman Mobidgen?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Ray Hall?
Yes.
Consent agenda's approved. That takes care of license requiring... May I just require me individual action? None?
None this evening.
Thank you. City managers report.
Mayor and council, I only have one item to share this evening. I did want to remind the community that we do have an Amber Alert out for a sixteen-year-old missing from our community, Kennedy McLauren. The police department held a press conference today that included the family, really asking for people with information to please contact us and share that information. So I would just make that same plea. A number of twenty-four hours a day for us for that information, nine one nine five eight oh four two four three. Again, nine one nine five eight oh four two four three with any information about Kennedy McLauren. So we would appreciate the community's help with that.
Thanks, Scott.
That's all I have.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Moving to the mayor and council members' report. I have a few proclamations that I need to read. And the first one is Constitution Week. I will not read that one. I'll just announce the fact that September seventeenth through twenty-third of this month is Constitution Week, and I will be at a program tomorrow afternoon to read it for them. Next is Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Whereas sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that causes pain, infection, disability, economic strain, and even death among many ethnic groups. And whereas approximately one out of every two hundred and ninety-four African-Americans, North Carolinians, is born with a sickle cell disease. And one out of every ten carries the sickle cell trait. No cure for this disease exists, though treatment is available to help those with sickle cell disease lead more productive and rewarding lives. And whereas since nineteen seventy-three, the North Carolina Sickle Cell Syndrome Program has provided quality service throughout the state, which includes screening for all newborns, general screenings by request for the public, education, genetic counseling, medical expenses reimbursement, and social support for affected persons. And whereas twenty twelve marks the fortieth anniversary of the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Amer, of America Incorporated, Eastern North Carolina Chapter, formerly the Anselo Sickle Cell Lumina Anemia Association, and it worked in the fight against sickle cell disease. And whereas support for research on the treatment and management of this disorder is vital to improving the health and quality of life of persons with sickle cell disease. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand and twelve, as Sickle Cell Awareness Month in the City of Goldsboro and urge all citizens to recognize and support this service. Each year we have this, and we get a lot of support throughout the community, and I ask that we do the same this year. Next proclamation, Mrs. Eliza Smith Jones Day. Whereas the Goldsboro community is a better place thanks to the dedicated, hard-working citizens who volunteer their time and talents toward helping others. And whereas Ms. Jones is a lifelong resident of Goldsboro and the widow of a prominent Goldsboro businessman. And whereas Ms. Jones graduated from North Carolina Central University in nineteen forty-three and spent her entire teaching career as a home economics teacher with the Wayne County Public Schools. And whereas Ms. Jones is a past member of the Dragonhead Club, served as guardian ad litem for ten years after retiring, and served as a judge for the Wayne County Agricultural Extension Service for H demonstrations. And whereas at the young age of ninety-two, Ms. Jones continues to serve her community by volunteering for the First African Baptist Church and is a member of the Goldwing Chapter of the North Carolina Retired School Personnel and the Goldwing Chapter of North Carolina Central Lumina Association Incorporated and the NCA, NAACP, who recognized her as Mother of the Year in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas the Goldwing Chapter of North Carolina Central Lumina Association Incorporated wishes to salute Ms. Jones at this year's Eliza Smith Jones Scholarship banquet, which will be held on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, at the First African Baptist Church. Now therefore, I also can give the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, as Mrs. Eliza Smith Jones Day in Goldsboro, North Carolina, in recognition of Ms. Jones' dedication to her community and to hereby encourage citizens to follow in her example. I'm very proud of this young lady, and I say young lady because at ninety-two, boy, she's doing a lot of things that most other people can't do. And I really appreciate her, and we need to salute her and thank her for what she's done. I have another very interesting letter here. Proclamation is Eunice Green Day. Whereas on September eighth, twenty twelve, Ms. Eunice Green celebrated an impressive hundred and tenth birthday, hundred and tenth. And whereas on September eighth, two thousand, September eighth, nineteen oh two, Eunice Evelyn Pelham was born in Pocahontas, Petersburg, Virginia. And whereas Ms. Pelham moved to New York in nineteen twenty-four, where she met her and married her husband, Thomas Green. And whereas Ms. Green lived much of her life in New York and New Jersey, but has enjoyed the last ten years of her life as a citizen of Goldsboro, North Carolina. Whereas Ms. Green has three, has three children, five grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, as well as six step-grandchildren and five step-great-grandchildren. And whereas Ms. Green enjoys reciting scripture, praying and singing, and previously volunteered for numerous senior citizen facilities in Jamaica, New York. And whereas, what generations, four generations of Ms. Green's family honored her with a birthday celebration on Sunday, September eighth, two thousand and twelve, at Saint Andrew's Episcopal Church, where she continues to be an active member. Now therefore, I also can give the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to hereby claim September eighth, two thousand and twelve, as Ms. Eunice Green Day in Goldsboro, North Carolina, in honor of Ms. Green's one hundred and tenth birthday, and call upon all citizens to join me in wishing Ms. Green a belated many more years of happiness to come. What a lady. I haven't met her, but I'd like to meet her. I have met a hundred, I don't know if I've met a hundred and ten yet, but I have met centenials. We have a lot of them. But a hundred and ten, I, I'm going to meet her. And we do have a resolution. Resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Dorithea P. Nguyen as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than twenty years. Is Dorithea here?
No.
No, she's not here. I'll read it anyway. Whereas Dorithea P. Nguyen retires on September, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, as a revenue collector supervisor in the Finance Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than twenty years of service. And whereas Dorithea began her career on May eleventh, nineteen ninety-two, as a revenue clerk cashier one with the Finance Department. And whereas on March seventeenth, nineteen ninety-seven, Dorithea served as the acting revenue collector. And whereas on July sixteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, Dorithea was promoted to office assistant two in the Public Works Department. And whereas on May fourteenth, two thousand and three, Dorithea was promoted to office assistant three in the Public Works Department. And whereas on June eighth, two thousand and eleven, Dorithea was promoted to revenue collector supervisor in the Finance Department, where she has served until her retirement. And whereas Dorithea has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf And whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, the other officials and employees and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro are expressing to Dorithea P. Nguyen their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over the years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that one, we express to Dorithea P. Nguyen our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the City of Goldsboro. We offer Dorithea our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after the seventeenth of September, two thousand and twelve. I offer this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known as an aye. Aye, closing. Motion's carried. Dorithea, I wish you'd hear it, because I pick on her awful lot. And I just found out last week that she's going to be retired. She kept that from me. But I want to wish her well, because she's, as you can tell, she's served city in many capacities, and she's an outstanding, outstanding human being. So we wish Dorithea well. She's been a good friend of mine for a long time. And I know she's going to enjoy retirement. We're going to miss her, but she's earned it. She deserves it. She's ready to go, so Godspeed.
She's going to be dearly missed. She's going to be dearly missed.
Yes, absolutely. She is. Okay.
I just want to thank the police department and the sheriff's department for their actions Friday night at the pines.
They kept you out of jail.
Well, now my mom's a resident there, and their fast actions sure helped everybody feel better.
Fantastic. Good to hear that. Anything else?
No, that's...
Charles?
No comment.
Charles?
No report.
No report?
Well, I'd like to commend the Parks and Recreation and the maintenance personnel for staying ahead of all the grass we've had lately, and just how good our parks look. And it makes a real difference. And I'd also like to commend both departments for the renovations out at the golf course, the municipal golf course. They all really work together, work very hard, and really shows what a teamwork can do for a local community.
You like that golf course?
I like it very much. Yes, sir. It doesn't help me play, but I enjoy it.
Scott, it's helping him play. Michael?
I'd just echo what Gene had mentioned. I'd like to thank our police department for their quick response to that situation Friday night at the pines. It was very nice to see, and I'm glad that no one was hurt.
Okay, there's nothing.
We do have pro session item, property acquisition, and legal action.
This meeting is adjourned to go to pro session for...
Property and...
...property acquisition?
And legal.